I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do audio windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINYS. Just call. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 12, 2018 Board of Selectmen meeting. And we'll start off the meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're starting a little early tonight, 6:30. We're having a meeting with the joint with the Board of Health. And there's an appointment of an interim Board of Health member. And that appointment, once appointed tonight, will is from February 12, 2018 until May 12, 2018, which is the town election. The applicants are Matthew Newman from High Street, and Evan Smith, and Jessica Circle. So we have the Board of Health numbers. How would you like to do this?
Is there a question, or did you want us to do so ourselves?
Yeah, is there anything that you'd like to say, or if you want?
No, no, I'm glad to be here. I would like to formally state for the record, with heavy heart, I'm sure the Board of Selectmen accepted the resignation of our Chair, Dr. Maggie. In the four years that I served under her, I thought she was an excellent Chair, very fair and impartial. For personal reasons, she has stepped aside, and I look forward to not only the Board of Health, but also the Board of Selectmen making a joint decision and actually filling her slot for the next nine weeks. I think it's very important that we have a third member of the Board between now and our elections in May.
Is there Matthew Newman or Evan Smith here?
They're both here.
Both here, okay. Well, the vacancy was posted on the town website, Facebook page, on Tuesday, February 6th. And received 2,984 views and shares of the post. And it was also posted again on Thursday, February 8th, at 8:58 a.m., and received 1,686 views and shares on the post. And two applicants were received for the interim vacancy. Matt Newman of 183 High Street, his previous board experience, he served seven years on the Recreation Commission, two years on the Community Preservation, and many years at the Liberty at Drake Library. So if Matthew would like to take the podium here a little bit, identify yourself, and tell the Selectmen why you would be the best candidate for this job.
Well, good evening. As you can see, on a personal level, I live at 183 High Street. I've been here 14 years. I have two children and a wife. And, of course...
Oh, some people have that with their wives, so...
Basically, I spent some time on the Recreation Board and CPC, and I'm a member of St. Echo's Church, and I'm active there. I just love my community, and I want to get back into it. I've had a couple of years off where I've been working, and the kids are getting older, so I'd like to get back into it. And I'm a positive person that enjoys being part of a board. I feel I have a lot to offer regardless of any issues, because I'm open-minded and enjoy serving, so that's one of my specialties. And just, oh, in general, I feel, you know, I'm a homeowner, so I'm familiar with, you know, issues when it comes to health. I've worked in restaurants, I've worked in supermarkets, so I'm very familiar with a lot of things that go on with the board. And I feel like I add, you know, something to it. I'll also add, you know, work with, you know, the tree lighting sometimes. I just like to get involved, and if I can add, you know, help at any, any level, I enjoy it. So that's my main motivation, and I hope, you know, I can see that, you know, I'll be on the candidate back there. I'm glad to see him get involved, but, you know, it's up to you guys, but I can just tell you that what I bring to the table on a personal level and professional level is, you know, basically, you know, I'm a positive person that enjoys getting involved and helping out. I think that would be an asset to any board.
Yes. Does the board have any questions, or candidates?
I'd like to ask a question of Matt. This is an interim appointment, and in May, the seat will have to... You run far at the election? Are you, if you were to be appointed, are you planning on running for a full term?
Well, I would think, you know, that would be my main motivation, of getting involved for the next three months. I don't think I would just... So I'm sure that's what you guys would be looking for, and knowing that I've been involved before. But I'm sure you just don't want somebody with three months, and after someone's served four years, you don't want somebody that's just going to do three months and then, you know, and be done with it. So I guess the procedure would, I'd have to probably pull papers, right?
Yes.
But my main focus is if you, if you do appoint me to give it my all, and then go from there. If that's the procedure as far as, does that seat up? Is this seat up in May? Is that what it is? Okay. Well, I can say for the record that I would, I guess I would have to pull papers and continue to try and work on what I, if I am appointed, what I, you know, started.
If you were appointed tonight, I'd recommend that you would go to the town clerk's office, and where they would give you all the information that's required to have your name on the ballot, should you be appointed.
Sure. No problem.
Thank you. Ken?
I, and I think most of us here know Matt through the Recreation Department, tree lighting, and other events around town. I know you as a very conscientious, energetic man, personable fellow, and I'm just glad the public has a chance to get to meet you, too.
I appreciate that.
Anybody else?
Mr. Newman, thank you for expressing an interest in the position. It's probably not a fair question, but I've been known to ask unfair questions in the past. So if you were to be appointed, what would these, if these next nine weeks were to exceed your expectations sitting on the board, what would that look like for you?
You're right, boy. See?
Touche.
As far as, what do you mean, exceed expectations? It was better than I thought, and more...
At the end of these nine weeks, you would say, wow, I made the right decision?
Well, you know, I absolutely, because that's a good, that's a fair question, because I can't sit here and say, I have full knowledge of everything you do and everything, but what I do have is the willingness to learn. And, and if it does exceed, because it's, it's what you put in for the effort. So as far as meetings and figuring things out, and I'm sure that would happen, because I, you know, I enjoy learning, and especially when it comes to working with others on a board, and you need that. And I think it would probably exceed my expectations, because I'm here tonight with some knowledge, but I honestly can tell you, I'm sure, we're not all full of, we're not all engineers, and we're not all, you have to use what qualities you have and carry with that. So, thank you. Is that answering your question?
Of course.
Okay. Anybody else? Hearing none? Then we, we thank you.
Thank you. Be thankful.
Please hang around for a little bit. The next candidate is Evan Smith of 17 Jessica Circle. He's both a student and works in construction, septic installation-related field, and has knowledge of sanitary requirements. So, how you doing, Evan?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I'm just simply looking to learn, getting on a board that would more teach me about what I may be doing in school next year as a student. I've lived in town most of my life, and followed my grandmother around, and she's traveling around town, doing town things. The openness to learn, that's really it.
Does anybody have any questions to Evan?
I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Evan, I see here that you work in a construction, septic installation-related field. Would the company that you work for, do they go before the Board of Health for any reason? Do you know?
Yes. However, they do not do a whole lot of work in Pembroke. For the nine months that I've worked for them, we have not done one job in Pembroke, so I would not be in conflict of interest with that.
I would just have to remind you that, should that occur, you would probably, at the direction of the chairman, have to recuse yourself from voting on any issue, should that ever occur. And I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked Matthew. If you are appointed tonight by our boards, it's for an interim term, would you, are you planning on then, if you are appointed, taking out papers to be on the ballot for a three-year term?
Due to schooling being in October, this term, I would not be pulling out papers, just because I wouldn't be able to give myself 100% effort through the next term. But in the future, seeing how, you know, if I get appointed today, then I would definitely consider pulling out papers in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have a question? Ken?
Yeah, similar to Matt, I know Evan through your family, through the whole Smith family, your mom, your aunt, your grandma. Evan has been, as we all know, Evan's been a great contributor to the community, the best he can as a, as a young man, and I'm glad to see that you want to take that and move forward as a, as a young adult. So this is a great first step, and with however the board votes here tonight, please keep up those efforts in your interest, for more folks like you come forward. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Bill?
Mr. Smith, 10 years ago, as an 18-year-old... I probably wouldn't find myself standing up here, so I give you a lot of credit for coming up here. You mentioned your family very politically involved. Just give me one little nugget or one lesson that you've learned. You mentioned following your grandmother around. Just share one little experience that has been a valuable lesson for you.
One experience, one thing I've learned? One thing I've learned is community-first. An experience would be to always agree with people and share your thoughts as they go, but always be open-minded about different things in town.
Good. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I had my hand up, but...
Oh, I didn't see you. I'd say I should...
I would just give testimony to the fact that Evan is a great young man, and I've had the pleasure of seeing him do some construction work and some of the work that he's done around town, and it's just outstanding.
Well, that concludes the applicants. Now, the vote is a majority of five members of the Board of Selectmen and the two remaining members of the Board of Health. So if, unless anybody else has any other questions, I need a nomination for a candidate.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the name of Matthew Newman to fill the vacancy.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That would be five from the board.
We did aye.
Both tonight?
We both did aye.
Both tonight? Okay. So it'll be five to two.
No.
I said aye.
They said aye, yeah.
Oh, you said aye? I thought you said tonight.
No.
Oh, okay. Okay. So it'll be seven in favor? Okay. Well, appreciate both of you guys coming forward for the appointment. The vote is, is seven for Mr. Newman, and...
Six.
Did you, did you say that?
No, I suppose.
You were opposed. I didn't hear that either, so I guess I got it. So it would be six to one. I appreciate both of you coming in, and just a word to Evan that you've got a long future ahead of you. I'd like to see you come back again and maybe join a board and, and help out in the town. And we like to see, you know, young kids coming forward. So it's, it's a pleasure to see somebody as young as you coming in here and has an interest in the town, because we do need that.
We need to take Mr. Newman upstairs to the town clerk's office right now after this meeting. We'll be able to proceed without meeting.
Yes.
So we will, he's sworn in.
That's right.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Congratulations, and good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Congratulations. Thank you. I'm sorry, what? Is there anything to say?
No, no worries. Doesn't make a difference since it's six to one.
Okay. We also, next up on the agenda is a Council on Agents Directive Screening Committee recommendation and appointment. And this was, the Board of Selectmen voted to have Selectmen Stone represent the board on the Council on Aging Directive Screening Committee. Between the advertisement and submission deadline, 26 resumes were received, and five more were received after the deadline for submission. All 31 submissions were reviewed, screened, and reviewed by both, Town Administrator, former COA Director Anna Sheary. And at their January meeting, Anna Sheary presented to the Council on Aging Board a screening review and ranking process, and obtained their approval for the process. The COA Board chose their members Linda Osborne, Sue Hewitt, as well as Anna Sheary to participate in the Council on Aging Directive Screening Committee, joining Selectmen Stone and Town Administrator Ed Thorne. The COA Director Screening Committee performed the final screening review, candidate selection, and interview. On February 7th, four candidates were interviewed. To interview before the committee, one candidate withdrew for health reasons. Of the three candidates interviewed, the COA Director Screening Committee was unanimous on their recommendation to the Selectmen to appoint Susan Shea as the Council of Aging Director for the town of Pembroke. The ad and Mrs. Shea's resume and letter of interest are attached, and the position appears in the Classification of Compensation Bylaws in Schedule A, SA-29. So is there anybody that has any questions or concerns? Ken?
I think since Lou sat on the committee, if he could give us a brief report?
Yes, I would have to say some of the things that Bill has. First of all, we met with Ed and came up with an ad, and where the ad would be placed, job descriptions of the job, salary requirements, everything that's necessary when you advertise a position to work at the town of Pembroke. The Chairman of the Council on Aging Board, Janet LaBurge, met with her board and selected Linda Osborne and Sue Ellen Hewitt, and Anna Sheary, the former Council on Aging Director, agreed to participate and worked closely with the COA Board and with Ed Thorne and Sabrina Chilcott to bring all of the resumes that were received. There were 31 of them. And Ed and Anna Sheary screened them all and got them down to four. And we scheduled interviews, one-on-one interviews with the committee. Three people were able to make it, the fourth one had an illness problem and dropped out. So after we reviewed the three candidates that we considered to be the best of the number of resumes that responded, it was obvious to us that the right choice for the town was Susan Shea, who is the outreach worker at the Council on Aging and has been working very closely with the outgoing director, Anna Sheary. So we weighed everything that was in front of us, and we unanimously agreed to present to the board Susan Shea as our recommended candidate for Council on Aging Director. And if there are no more questions from anyone, I would like to move the appointment of Susan Shea as the Director of the Council on Aging.
Second. Here we have a motion and a second to appoint Susan Shea. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, please say no. Ayes out, so it'll be five to zero.
I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, that I want to thank the board for allowing the committee to do what we did, having confidence in the people that were on the committee. And so I thank the board for that.
I want to thank you for spending the extra time and effort also that, that I'm doing these, because I've been involved in a lot of myself, and they, they take a long time, and there's a process to try to get the right person for the right job, so thank you for that.
Okay. Next up on the agenda would be the DPW Director Commissioners of the DPW for fiscal year 19 budget request. Are they around anywhere?
No, Mr. Chairman, I talked to the Chairman, Mr. Bastinelli, today, and they wanted to be put on the agenda in two weeks.
Two weeks? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question of the Town Administrator? Are we also going to schedule the Librarian and the Director of the COA in to discuss their requests?
That's the tentative plan right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you have a member of the audience who looks a lot better than the last time he was here.
Which, Mr. Boil, he does look pretty chipper out there tonight. Good to see you here.
Thank you. It's good to be here, literally good to be here. And I want to just stop in, hopefully say a special thank you to Selectmen Tribune, who was kind enough to get the 911 people to meet in time. I'm a bit of a medical miracle to someone who suffered a stroke and went through what I went through, and 24 hours later, walked down to Soul Show Hospital. So I thought I'd go back into the building and let people know I'm alive, well, full motion, full everything. Why the mysteries of Facebook and all that stuff? I think my demise was greatly written, and I'm here standing before you. So each and every one of you, thank you. I hope I didn't throw a commit for a monkey or ginger agenda that night, but the Irish have always said it better be seen than viewed, and I'm very happy to be sitting and standing here in front of you guys, so I just wanted to say a thank you.
I think everybody was trying to decide who's going to go with you in the ambulance to hospital.
Well, I think I'll tell you, thank Kevin for Pembroke PD, Pembroke Fire, you know, to say they're the best, but if you're going on Group 53 and they tell you your blood pressure is 242 over something, that's not a number you want to hear.
Oh, that's for sure.
I wasn't totally optimistic. So I said before you, three weeks later, grateful, and humble, to say the least.
Appreciate it, Ted. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate all the work you guys do.
Thank you.
Glad you're doing well and back, Dave. Just to remind you, next Wednesday, we have another meeting, Wednesday night, so it's time to get back to work.
Yeah, Karen already sent me back to work, so that's... I've actually got a school committee meeting, so I'm getting a little by the little, sir, but I will do my best. Look forward to it.
Thank you. I'm glad you're well.
Thank you.
That's good. Just remind everybody also that, note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 15, and it's being recorded for broadcast at future dates. So comments made in open session will be recorded. Next up on the agenda is actually 7:30, but you can wait a little bit for that. Is there, is that a hearing or not? No, it's not. It's just the application. Is Nicholas Wilson here?
No.
Oh, not here.
I recognize him when he walks in the room.
Okay. So we can wait, we got some other items to bring up anyway. What action items? So we need to accept a donation of a leased vehicle from McGee Pre-Owned Superstore to the Police Department. Can you tell us anything about that, Ed?
Well, I think Chief Wall was, is requesting that the Board of Selectmen accept the donation of McGee Pre-Owned Superstore by General Manager Ahmed Shahid of a leased vehicle for the use of the department's plainclothes officers. And we are asking that the Board of Selectmen accept the donation of McGee, of this vehicle.
I would move acceptance.
Second.
And the lease value would be $3,000, excuse me, $3,600. So unless there's any other questions or comments?
I just want to say that it's very magnanimous of McGee to offer this to the, to the police station as, as a gift. I believe this is due to a police vehicle that was involved in an accident and has been taken out of service. And as the insurance process goes through, when the town does get paid the insurance that goes into the general fund at the police station's fund to buy a new cruiser, so right now, they're stuck without, without a vehicle. So it's very nice of McGee, local business, to step up for this.
Very good. Good for the explanation.
Need to vote.
Okay. So unless there's any other questions or comments, take a vote. Everybody that's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, then it would be five for... This is a great... Hearing none, then it would be five to zero, which is a great thing. There's a lot of these vehicle, ownerships or whatever, all around the Commonwealth that do the same thing. They give a car to the town for drug purposes and they put a drug officer on it or whatever and donate it by that particular place. But it's nice to see that McGee, you know, has stepped forward and helped out the town. Consider request for appointment, Community Task force of Michelle Burt and Brian Van Reiper.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that Brian Van Reiper as the Planning Board's representative and Michelle Burt as the Citizen at Large Representative be appointed to the Community Center Study Committee.
Second. Any questions or comments? Would Mrs. Burt is in the audience, would you like to say anything?
I'm just excited to be a part of committee and looking forward to it. I wish you had an exciting story like me.
You really don't wish you had an exciting story like that? All righty. Unless there's any other questions or comments, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Congratulations. We'll get you while we can. Thank you. Thank you for serving. Vote to... Consider a one-day liquor license for the Pembroke Historic Society event, which will be Sunday, April 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And this is their annual meeting and breakfast, pancake breakfast. And they seek to serve mimosas and Bloody Marys at the Historic Society Building at 116 Center Street on that date of April 8th, from 9:00 to 2:00. So if you're interested in a pancake breakfast with a Bloody Mary chaser, then there we go. Mr. Chairman, I would move granting a one-day liquor license to the Pembroke Historical Society for their pancake breakfast on April 8th.
Second.
Okay, and just anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none. The liquor license is under Mass General Laws 138, Section 14. Will serve all alcoholic beverages from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on April 8th at 116 Center Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So the ayes have it. Well, good luck with their breakfast. I want for liquor breakfasts. There's also a vote to accept the minutes of February 5th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board vote to accept the minutes of the Selectmen's meeting of February 5th, 2018, as written.
Second. Motion and a second. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Yeah, ayes have it. You have a town administrator's report tonight?
Just one thing. As shared with the board late last week, we received word from the Community Compact Program that we received a $10,000 grant for the town to do a Americans with Disabilities Act transition plan. And so we're in the process right now of putting together an RFQ so that we would send out to firms that specialize in doing these and also the Old Call and the Planning Council as well.
Further to that, Ed, as you know, the Commission on Disabilities here in town is very keen to be any assistance that they can. So I know there are certain administrative procedures that they don't have to be day-to-day involved with, but if you can keep them involved with all the correspondence that they need to be involved with, please do.
Okay. Nothing else, then we'll ask the selectmen. Anybody have anything to ask the selectmen?
Mr. Chairman, I think I would have to ask this question of the town administrator. Several people have reported that when they get their trash and their recycling totas picked up, there has been occasions when one truck has taken both. And I know we have had some issues in the past with vehicle shortages, also severe snowstorm preventing the usual trucks to be on the road safely. Is that... Has that been the case?
One time. And that was in a situation where we were backlogged with pickup. And we got to the point where we almost would have had, and several neighborhoods would go a whole week without getting any trash picked up. And that was when we had a series of storms that forced the... With the holiday and with the storm, forced the backup between two and three days. And so we were able to get clearance through the special waiver that would allow us to do that because of the emergency situation. We didn't want anybody to go over a week without having anything picked up. So that just happened on one day.
Great, thank you. I'd just like to say to the public that may be watching or listening to us that this is a situation that we are aware of. Trash and recycling is handled through the Selectmen's office. And we also were involved with negotiating the contract with the Hala. So we're well aware of what has to be done. And unfortunately, on that one occasion, we had that issue and we had, as Ed has said, he had to make a decision. And the decision was pick it up or tell people they'd have to wait another week. So it isn't something that we are not aware of. I just wanted to make sure that Ed had the opportunity of explaining why that happened. Thank you.
All righty. Is there any new business to discuss? Hearing none. We have some upcoming issues. On February 26th, at 7 o'clock, the First Church is going to be here to request the use of the town Memorial Green for Old Home Day Fair, which is a yearly thing. On March 5th, at 7, the Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, from Plymouth County Retirement, will give an update. Also on March 5th at 7:30, the School Committee will come in to talk about their fiscal year 19 budget presentation. April 23rd is the signing of the town meeting warrants. May 8th is the annual town meeting. And May 12th is the annual town election. The only thing we got left is Nicholas Wilson. And it's like eight past, is a...
You know, maybe the board might want to take a brief...
We're going to recess for 10 minutes.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he's going to be here or not.
Okay. Yeah, he said he was planning to come in.
Oh, okay.
He did.
Well, if you could take a recess and then we could...
You guys take care of that. The other thing is, just so that I don't forget it, I mean, I know this winter has been a really cold winter. There's been a lot of ice on the ponds, but we've had so much warm weather lately that the ice really is not safe now. So you really have to watch your animals. We don't want dogs and other animals going out onto the ice, especially kids. So I just give a note to the parents out there, make sure that you counsel your kids to stay off of the ice and going to have another safe year this year without having any problems. So just that word on that. So it's going to take a 10-minute recess and we'll be back hopefully to talk about Nicholas Wilson and his Common Victuoso license, the application for the 35 School Street. So we'll come back in open session. Again, took a little 10-minute recess here and we do have the candidate that did come in. So this is for Common Victuoso's license application. Gather LLC at 35 School Street. The applicant is Nicholas Wilson, 27 Popular Street in Westwood. He is requesting to prepare and serve food to the public from 7:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m. Tuesday through Sunday. He has received his certificate of occupancy from the building inspector and the fire chief. He has completed his hearing without appeal through the ZBA and received a special permit to operate a restaurant. He has scheduled his health inspection and has received food permits and submitted his requested certification to the Board of Health. They have filed a business certificate with the town clerk, Mary Ann Smith. So Mr. Wilson, would you like to tell us something about yourself and your restaurant?
Yes, absolutely. There are some snacks for you guys too. But we are with Gather Restaurant, myself and my business partner Shelton. We operate a breakfast and lunch Tuesday through Saturday. And Sunday, we are doing family-style dinner from, well, two different seedings. It's a focus on community and sort of a family-style setting. So Sundays, it'll be designed after going to Grandma's house after church. So you'll come in, it'll be communal-style seating, you'll sit where you sit, and then we'll serve everything family-style. So it'll be designed sort of like a Thanksgiving dinner, you know, pass the potatoes, pass the chicken. And that way, it encourages everyone to go back to this lost art of having to communicate with each other, especially over dinner, and get back to some of these wholesome family values. And, you know, just being able to operate with good food, good time, quality food, quality time.
Awesome. Anybody have any questions?
Are you going to ban cell phones while you're serving dinner?
So it is encouraged to unplug. So we actually made a conscious effort. We do not have a TV in there. You know, we actually don't have like a lot of plugs and things like that to even charge cell phones or to, you know, use your computer. We do have free Wi-Fi, but we want people to be able to come in and actually talk with each other. We, you know, want to be able to create an environment as if you were coming to any one of our houses. You know, if you're not just going to sit there and sort of zone out, you're going to have to interact with each other. And we want to be able to know who you are. We want to be able to, you know, call you on a first-name basis. We want to know how your kids are, how your grandkids are, who won the game, how many scores they got in hockey. You know, we want you to be able to know who our kids are, who our wife is. So, you know, if you see my son Skylar running around, I want you guys to be like, hey, Skylar, stop acting up. You know, that's the type of environment that we want to be able to have and encourage as if you were, you know, at your family's house. So that's what we're going for. But getting really good food, too.
Awesome.
One other question. Could you tell us again and the public about your Sunday special dinners?
Yes.
You said there'd be a couple of seedings.
Yeah.
Do you want to repeat that again for people?
Absolutely. So we're starting off with two seedings right now, a 4 o'clock and a 6 o'clock seating. That will be the only day that we're actually taking reservations. So what's happening is that Chef Shelton will be posting the menu online about three weeks in advance. That'll be a three-course meal, an appetizer, entree, and dessert. When you arrive, you'll check in and the seating that we'll have will sort of be three different tables. So, you know, if two of you made a reservation and four of you made a reservation and none of you guys know each other, all of you guys might be sitting together at the same table. And again, it's to be able to get to know people and interact with people that you might not necessarily ever know or ever interact with. Where they're to provide the food, you guys drive the conversation. The only time that, you know, we'll have to intervene is if it gets a little bit out of control with politics or something like that, you know, let's help and redirect. But when you come in, you'll get the food. Everything is actually served in family style, in like old-school Pyrex from like the 50s and 60s. My family collects old-school Pyrex. It's something that's like really important and dear to us. And so that's actually all being implemented in the restaurant. So you'll actually, you know, talk to each other to be able to pass the food around and, you know, dish out your meals. And like I said, just to be able to have that time of getting good food and communicate with each other.
Awesome.
I met the family and was one of the first customers on the opening day and it was very good. It was a good stop. And I'm sure you're going to be successful.
Thank you.
Ed, do you have anything? Ken?
Sounds exciting. I want to welcome you to Pembroke and I wish you the best.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So everyone here has been really great. You know, a lot of the things that we were looking for when we were looking for towns is to have that, you know, small town, that community feel. We wanted to be able to be a part of somewhere that we wouldn't feel like we'd be getting lost in the shuffle, somewhere that we felt like we could be able to help make an impact into the community, somewhere that we felt that we could invest in with our children. We all have, we all have small children, all three families that are involved. The oldest is five, everywhere from five to, oldest one, then eight months. So, you know, somewhere that we can, again, just be able to invest into the community and stick with those morals and values that are important to us.
Mr. Chairman, I would move granting the Common Victuoso license to Gather LLC.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Five to zero. So it looks like you have your license and congratulations. And we hope you do really well down there. And I'm sure that the board at some time or another will be down there to check out, you know, how your food is there.
Please do. Yeah, there's some blueberry muffins and there's some maple cranberry cookies for you guys. All right? Thank you.
Nice people.
Yeah, they are. I'd like them to just pick coincidences. I don't think that there's anything else. The only thing that I would like to say is that the Boys Club roof is almost completely done over there. And I wanted to thank the town and the boards that had the notion to give us some money to hire these people to go over and do the roof. It's coming out really great. They're doing an excellent job on it, something that the building has needed for a long time. We put a roof on that almost 40 years ago when we first started the building as a boys' club. And we haven't asked for any money from the town in almost 40 years. So this is the first money that the town has actually put into the building. And it is a town building. We finally got that squared away on the paperwork and got the deeds all straightened out and all that stuff. So I just wanted to say thanks to the people that were involved in making that happen. So looking forward to getting it all painted and fixed up, the windows and the rest of it, Phase 2 or whatever this year and making it a landscaped and all that kind of stuff so it looks really nice up there in the center. So, thank you. Most to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Somebody opposed, so I guess that's it.
Still meeting next week, right?
Right. Ladies and gentlemen, there isn't any meeting next week. and we will see you in two weeks and hopefully keep the snow away for the rest of the year. Good, thank you and good night.